Welcome to the February 12, 2025 Local One Township Board Commissioners, State and Advertised Monthly Meeting. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance and civil rights of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just go over some quick meeting rules of conduct. When addressing the board, please come to the podium in the front of the boardroom. Please state your name and address clearly for the record. And please address the entire board regarding the agenda item that is in front of us. If you would like to address the board regarding another item, the non-agenda item, at the end of the meeting is the time to address the board. We welcome public input. And we appreciate you being with us tonight in person or on Zoom. In an effort to conduct our business meeting this evening, public comment will be limited to three minutes. Myself as President or Vice President can, we can yield some extra time if needed on any issue. Please be respectful and kind. Thank you very much. First committee is my committee Denise Currits, Chair of the Internal Affairs Committee. First item on my agenda is review and consider the minutes of January 14, 2025. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments or anything that needs to be redacted? Okay.
Good here.
Okay. Is there any public comment regarding the minutes of January 14, 2025? I see none in the room. Anyone on Zoom? Okay, if not, I'd like to make a motion to approve the January 14, 2025 minutes.
Sir.
Motion's been moved and seconded to approve the January 14, 2025 minutes. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 No opposed. Thank you Commissioners. The motion's passed. Next item is review and consider the February 2025 bill list. Any questions or comments from our board?
I sent them my questions. They answered them all.
Thank you so much Ruth. And once again, it's always a comprehensive list. Anyone online Dennis, Sean? Good, okay. Anyone? Oh, any public comment regarding our bill list? I see none. How about online Leah?
Nope.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the February 2025 bill list.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded to approve the February 2025 bill list. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Looks like no opposed. Thank you Commissioners. The motion's passed. Next is review and consider America 250 PA Resolution. So this is a Pennsylvania state partnership to the America 250 National Effort as we approach the United States 250th Anniversary in 2026. We have received this request through Montgomery County for our board to consider the attached resolution supporting the program's mission. Twenty-seven Montgomery County municipalities have adopted the resolution so far. To give everybody a quick idea, it's in our books, but the America 250 campaign theme is quote E, period P, period I, period C, period epic. And we'll develop programs within the themes below. E for educate, P for preserve, I for innovate, and C for celebrate. There's a whole, there's two, four, six, eight, 10, 12 how we're going to salute PA, discover PA, recognize PA, experience PA. A forum that there's going to be a whole lot of programs and nourish PA, showcase, impact, designate, expression. It's a statewide program that projects that support in Pennsylvania, innovate and promise. So I think this is something really nice for us to be a part of. Does the board have any questions?
Great. I think it's a good opportunity for us.
Great. How about Dennis, Sean?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, and just to confirm what we've talked about around this is that it doesn't commit us to any actions aside from supporting it. Right? So there's no financial commitment. There's no other resource commitment other than sharing whatever it is they're going to ask us to share. Is that right?
Absolutely. It's really about programs and projects. It's honoring servicemen members who sacrificed and supported their families in our community. Programs or projects supporting like history, education, civic and civic engagement. There's like I said, two, four, six, eight, 10, 12. Twelve, you know, it's, it's just a, it's a wonderful resolution. It's supportive of everything that's really good. The environment, preservation of historic sites, and really it's about this. I believe it's the 250. It's called a semi-quinsentennial. Really a celebration. Just really celebrate America. Celebrate this 250 PA. They're not asking us to do anything, but just to be a part of it. And I feel, I feel something really good. You okay Dennis and Sean?
Yeah, I'm okay. I mean, I don't know if I fully understand it, but I think I understand what the mission is. Isn't what they're adding.
Okay.
Yeah, no issues. No issues for me.
Okay. Any, I'll take public comment at this time. Does anyone have, would like to address the board regarding this agenda item? I don't see anyone in the room that wants to address this, us regarding this agenda item. Anyone on Zoom? Okay, so we have a resolution in our book. It's resolution number 2505, as I described. It's a, you know, whereas the Pennsylvania Legislature and Governor created America 250 PA in 2018 to plan, encourage, develop, and coordinate the commemoration of 250th Anniversary of the United States of Pennsylvania. Integral role in that event and the role that its people on the nation, past, present, and future, all their contributions. I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number 25-05.
Sir.
Motion's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 2505 as described. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I see no opposed. Motion's passed. Thank you Commissioners. Next is the Administration Report. Manager Hoffman.
Good evening. Just two things that I wanted to specifically reference this evening. The first is that continuing with the facilities planning and the first step of property acquisition. We did submit our offer, updated offer to the Academy of the New Church for the property at Huntington Pike and Buck Road. So we are awaiting their response to that, but hopefully that's a conversation that will kind of continue and we can facilitate to get that over the finish line relatively soon. And then the second item was just wanted to let the board know, one of the things that we discussed in the budget process, but did not provide a specific funding allocation for was to replace the building at Lower Moreland Park. So I did have a call this morning with Ritu to request a proposal for them to help us out with a DCNR C2P2 grant, which is essentially a program that allows funds for park construction, different amenities in our parks. So we talked about the project scope. So they are going to get me a proposal that I expect to fit within our planning budget for the year. So provided that that is the case, I will sign off on that when we get it. And the application due date is April 2nd. So overall, as a project scope, we would be looking at replacing the park building there as well as perhaps a couple of additional amenities surrounding the playground with some sunscreens and things that when we kind of fund projects locally might be beyond our capacity. But because we can seek the grant funds, maybe an extra opportunity to do a little bit more. So that's the scope that we'll be looking at. So we will keep you updated about that along the way. And unless there's any other questions, that is my report for this evening.
Thank you, Manager Hoffman. And your first comment on your report, the parcel acquisition, just to reconfirm, I mean, that's for our public safety.
The new fire.
Our new fire.
The fire rescue station, correct.
So just to confirm. Okay, does the board have any questions, Manager Hoffman? Anyone? Sean, Dennis? Okay. I'm going to open this up for public comment. Can you please come up and address the board? Thank you.
This is for Chris.
Oh, address the board. Address all of us.
Well, he's not here.
Well, he'll, he's up there.
He submitted a new price. Are you at liberty to give us the new price? Is that public information?
I can answer that. It won't be public information necessarily until the board accepts the price. So the board will have to enter into an agreement of sale in public, but as far as negotiating a price, they're not necessarily required to disclose that because of real estate, which is an exception to the Sunshine Act.
Comes under the Sunshine Act.
It's an exception to the Sunshine Act for real estate acquisition.
Even though our taxpayers are paying for it?
Correct.
Okay.
Just to confirm and recap again, as we kept saying over and over at different meetings, that the board has a statutory obligation to provide for public safety in our community.
And Commissioner, just to also just remind everyone in the room, nothing has actually been approved or like, there's a whole process that if the offer is accepted, that will reveal all of that information, how the funding is going to work and all of those things. So we're just too early for that. But also wanted to be transparent in the actions that were being done because as Commissioner Currits just stated, we have been talking about this at these meetings now for a very long time.
And it's a part of our planning process. Thank you, Manager Hoffman. Does anyone else have any other questions for Manager Hoffman? Anyone on Zoom? May I ask? Okay, thank you. Next is our tax collector report. Our elected tax collector Jade Sales Online. Hi Jade. Would you like to give us all an update?
Thank you, Commissioner Currits. We're off to a new year. The tax bills for 2025 are in the mail. I don't know if any of you have received them yet. I haven't had any complaints yet, so we're still good. The amounts that will be collected township total is $7,058,659 even. And that includes township, the ambulance, EMS, fire, and library. The trash fee is a separate line item on the bill, and that is $1,442,700 even. The discount due date is April the 11th. So hopefully next month we'll have a lot of receipts to report. Any questions?
Thanks so much Jade. Does the board have any questions for Jade?
No.
Okay, anyone? Public comment or our tax collector Jane Sale? No one in the room? How about on Zoom Leah? No one on Zoom? Okay, thanks Jade. I'm going to accept your report as submitted.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome. Stay warm and dry. Next is my liaison report. So my liaison positions are Lowermore Township School District, Lowermore Township School District DEI, which is diversity, equity, inclusion. They have a new name now. It's called Excellence and Educational Equity Committee and Lowermore Township Community Events. So our, with regard to the Lowermore Township School District Excellence and Education Equity Committee, our first meeting of the year took place on January 28th from 6:30 to 8:00 PM. It's led by Scott Cole, who is the Director of Teaching, Learning, and Community Engagement, and he would like this new name for the committee. So the committee will continue its vital work for fostering a more equitable and inclusive school environment for all. Our next meeting is going to take place on March 24th from 6:30 to 8:00 PM. They all take place at the Lowermore Way School. Next, I have a Lowermore Township School District Board meetings. I attended the school board meeting on January 21st. The public, which is a public meeting and the, and the February 4 2025 Work Session Meeting, both on Zoom. The next meeting is scheduled for February 18th at 7:00 PM. They all take place at the Lowermore High School in the black box room. If anyone would like any other information, go to the township website at www.lmtst.org. Under Community Events, just quick recap, Director Warner, our Assistant Leah, and I had a Zoom meeting with Principal Bill Miles. Unfortunately, due to inclement weather, we had to reschedule on Martin Luther King Day event. We pushed it back to take place on Saturday, March 1st from 10:00 AM to 12:00 noon at Ridgeway Park. And of course, this will also be weather permitting, but everyone's looking forward to that. And all of our spring events have been scheduled and announced at our last month's meeting. So as the time goes, we will advertise all events on social media outlets and on our website closer to the time that they are scheduled. That concludes my agenda items for this evening. If the board doesn't have any questions regarding any of that. Board, okay. Chair will recognize Commissioner Mueller, Chair of the Community Development Committee.
Good evening and thank you, President Currits. The, the first item on my agenda tonight is to review and consider the ESCRO, ESCRO release for the Westrum Project, and that is at 2507 Fillmon Avenue, number 19-03. And then just as a review, there, there still remains two outstanding items for Westrum. That development, for that development site. Engineer Woodrow is prepared a letter recommending the ESCRO release, which is number 11 in the amount of $40,000. And this release is for the final level, final, final letter of a map revision for the flood plan revisions that were required. This leaves a remaining balance of about, of $10,000 for site seeding, which is planned to occur in, in the spring. And then just as for the record, the original value of the total ESCRO financial security was $1,389,506. So Engineer Woodrow, would you like to make any additional comments to that?
No Dennis, thank you. You know, that, that letter of map revisions from FEMA has been out a pretty long period of time. And finally, we were able to secure that document, which entitled them to this release of the SRO.
Are there any questions from the board or comments?
Do they ever share with us any information as to their occupancy or the half full, quarter full, pre-quarter full? Is that something we haven't like get access to or know of?
Joe, I don't know. I don't.
I'm not aware of anything either.
So yeah, we do get that information. They're the fire company. I know they've been tracking that for the status of occupancy of the building. I'm not sure if that's shared with you Mark or Bob.
They have been tracked.
We can make a phone call and find out.
Yeah, that would be wonderful.
Any other comments from the board?
No.
Are there any comments from the public?
We have a public comment. Can you please come up and address the board? Thank you.
Marky George, 2414 Dale Royden. I'm going to ask the Commissioner to indulge me here. I may run over the three minutes.
Probably owe you some extra time.
Thank you. This is concerning the Westrum ESCRO release. I understand there are more to come. But it is the best time to bring it up because it's still an active issue. And because, because there were, there were, we have two new commissioners that were not in place when my complaints came across. And they may or may not know. So I'm going to refresh everybody's memory with this. In terms of the planting, Mr. McDayton, I felt that hadn't been done properly and there were shortages. We met with Tim and walked the property. And in doing so, we discovered that several hundred feet of the chain link fence, if anybody remembers this saga, chain link fence was very obviously mowed down by the construction that the, of the particular event. And on that day, I think, I'll just go out and say, Tim, I think you could heard about that damage. It fell by its own weight. We never got the fence back. And at a certain point, Tim said that that Westrum chose not to do anything with it. They were going to remove it. And the reason they chose not to do anything with it was it was Westrum's fence. Now I'll ask again tonight. Was that Westrum's fence?
Yes.
Okay, so the reason I'm being so correct.
No, I, I.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Tim, we don't believe that that's correct. The chain link fence we're talking about, that is in the Septa right of way.
Kirk, I'm sorry Chris, I'm thinking, I'm thinking my white vinyl fence.
Oh no, no, not the white vinyl fence. This is the chain length fence.
Is it Septa right?
That ran the entire length from Redline Road essentially to 2381 property. There was several hundred feet mowed down during end construction. So again, the reply to me when I was battling to have it put back up, Westrum advised you that they were not going to replace it because it was on their property and they had no obligation to do so.
To be fair to you, Mr. DeGeorge, we have information that you don't. So maybe I should, is it okay if I read this?
That's why I'm asking.
In this paragraph, it says, and I'll just read it verbatim. I'm not going to do one of my summaries. I'm related to the Western project. Septa recently began clearing the right of way area along the railroad tracks, including the chain link fence, which had approached into the right of way when it was installed by prior property owners. Septa intends to construct a road entrance from the Redline Crossing to provide access to two newly constructed buildings serving as a switch for the tracks. Septa was previously pursuing this project opposite Kirk Drive and made this change without notice to the township. We will follow up with Septa to learn more so we may share information with the neighbors. Again, it ends up being entirely separate from the Western project and their obligations. But we can know they are no longer, it's no longer an option for them to put that fence.
Okay, but essentially it's owned by now Septa?
Yeah.
No, my, my recollection, my recollection of this, and maybe Tim or Chris, you can, you can fill in the blanks. My recollection is when this came up, you know, many months ago, Mr. DeGeorge, we, there was an inquiry that was put in and what was determined was that the prior property owner actually put the fence on Septa's right of way. So the fence wasn't owned by, the fence itself was, it was neither owned by Westrum or Septa, but it was on Septa's property. And Westrum made the decision at that point in time not to replace it in part because it wasn't on their property and they legally couldn't replace it. So it sounds like what's happening now, based on this, this other information that we just received, is that, you know, Septa is getting rid of the fence. Do I get that right, Chris?
Yes, we still need to confirm with Septa what their project scope is. They had been very good sharing information with Tim Woodrow back when it was the Kirk Drive project. So we need to reach out to our contacts and kind of get the same level of detail that we got last time. So I, I don't want to say definitively because I just, I haven't been out there to see it, that the chain link fence is coming down. But all of the clearing that is being done and your, your detailing of what the board ultimately determined in ESCRO release number 10 about the chain link fence is 100% accurate.
Okay, well, again, this is all new news. I've been witnessing the teardown of the fence. So then the question comes up. Why didn't Westrum claim ownership, et cetera? So.
They did not. I think that's the part that is a disconnect here for everybody is that Westrum did not claim ownership of the chain link fence, which is why it remained.
Yeah, I think at one time, and just to, just to resolve this, I think at one time, when it first came up, there was a question as to who owned the fence? And there was a lot of back and forth trying to figure out who exactly owned it and where the property line was and what was Septa. And there was a lot of, I think a lot of back and forth. And the end result of all that was it was on Septa's property, but they didn't put the fence up. And, and that's what created, I think, some of the disconnects that were, you know, very early on when your questions first came up about, you know, the fence being destroyed and whether or not Westrum was going to replace it or not. I think that's right. I think that's what I remember.
Okay, so this, my question came up only because I witnessed the removal of two fences, a chain link and a guardrail style fence that they elected to take out as well. So. And they're under no obligation to erect a new one. Is that?
Well, it's not, it's, it's, Westrum, that, that, Westrum has zero obligation and it, it doesn't sound like Septa is going to be putting up a fence. So.
That's what I'm referring, that Septa have an obligation.
Is Septa will not have any real obligations to us, but because like this won't be a land development in front of the board. But we do, we will be reaching out to Septa to get the full details of their project scope so that you can have an understanding of what is being done there.
Okay, can you advocate to the, for the residents to Septa that could a fence be re-erected whenever there's a?
That fence never ran to, never ran to Redline Road. The whole side near the Green property, there was never a fence there. It looks like that now that we're refreshing everyone's memory, that that chain link fence was probably installed by the cinder block company that used to operate out of that site. And so there's like a lot of old legacy industrial fences there. I don't believe it's Septa's policy to fence in their tracks, other than that station. So.
Okay, it is unusual seeing that most of the other properties along that whole railroad is fenced. So it's not, it's not a warm feeling to have it torn down with no concern, that type of thing. So thank you for your touch.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Leah, are there any additional comments from anyone else in, in the room there or online? Okay, all right. Then at this time, what I'd like to do, hearing no additional comments, is to make a motion to approve the ESCRO release in the amount of $40,000 that I described above. And since it's been a couple of minutes, I'll just, I'll just remind everybody what that's for. And this is, this was for, this was ESCRO release number 11 related in the amount of $40,000 for the final letter of the map revisions for the flood plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded to improve ESCRO release number 11 in the amount of $40,000 as described. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you Commissioners. I don't see any opposed. The motion's passed. Next.
Yep, so, yep, the, the next item on the agenda, on my agenda, is to review and consider the planning commission appointment. And, you know, I, I just like to start off and say that, you know, I was really happy when we, you know, opened this further up to, to the public. They asked for volunteers. And happy to have heard that there was the incumbent, which is Kurt Meyer, who was interested, but also three other individuals who were interested in, in serving on the planning commission. Over the last two weeks, the board conducted a number of interviews with each of these individuals to, to select somebody. And this is for the term that's ending on February 25th. So what I, what I'd like to do is, is just open this up for a discussion, you know, amongst the board. And I'll, I'll go first. I, I think that, you know, Kurt brings a lot of experience to the position. He's been the co-chair for a while. I, I think that he has a good understanding of what we've done. And although the, the other three candidates, and there was a couple that, that I was interested in also in terms of, you know, their enthusiasm for the position, but lacking some of the experience and the history and that Kurt is still interested in the position, in the position. It's my opinion that I would like to see Kurt stay in that. So I'll, I'll go first. I, I don't know for those online, you know, Sean, as well as the rest of the Commissioners are there, if you have any additional comments that you'd like to share.
Well, how about you go first?
Yeah, I mean, I, I tend to agree with everything you just said Dennis. I, I think, yeah, Kurt brings not just experience being on the board, leadership experience. He knows the process. He understands for the long arc of that history. So the fact that he was interested and had enthusiasm to continue on speaks a lot about him and his commitment. And yes, I do want to thank the other candidates as well because they brought enthusiasm. They were interested. It's really great to see people who want to participate, who want to give back to their community, give back to the township. So. You know, for what it's worth, for those who did interview for this, like, you know, we'd love to speak to you about potential other roles in the future. You know, don't, don't lose touch just yet. But yeah, I would say that I'm also in favor of Kurt remaining in that position. Uh, don't lose touch just yet, but yeah, I would say that, um, also in favor of Kurt remaining in that position.
Thank you, um, I agree with both of you, and also, this was award four, uh, open position. And I agree with both of you, and that, uh, Kurt has given a lot of time in years, uh, I believe he's been on since two thousand and six. It's almost two decades, and he serves as vice president, and there's, you know, he's doing a nice job. But we did have, uh, some nice, some great candidates, and very enthusiastic, so Commissioner Canelli.
I agree.
Commissioner Pace?
I also agree with the recommendation.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Howson?
I agree.
Okay, so we all agreed to you, Commissioner Mueller.
Yep, are, are there any, uh, comments from the public at this time? Either in the room or online?
Taking public comment now from anyone in the room?
Okay.
Online.
Alright, uh.
None.
If there's no comments, I, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-five dash oh-six, reappointing Kurt Mayer. Uh, to the four-year term on the planning commission commending February twenty-sixth to twenty-twenty-five and ending February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-nine.
Second. Sean, second, the motion's been moved, thank you, motion's been moved and seconded, approve resolution twenty-five dash oh-six. Reappointing Kurt Mayer for a four-year term as described, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 There are no opposed, thank you Commissioners, motion's passed.
Uh, the third item on my agenda is the building official report, and since I'm online, I can't see if Jill or Ted are in the room, but I'd like to invite them up to, to give that report.
Coming up, right now, Commissioner Mueller.
Hello, it's Jill. Um, so we had ninety-five permits this month, ninety-four inspections, um. We've been doing some more violation notices, some citations to the court. Um, and just to review our permit process, um, when someone comes in for a permit, and like, let's say they're doing an addition. Um, if they're doing multiple things like plumbing, electric, mechanical, one address will have multiple permits for that, because we do one for building, one for plumbing, one for mechanical, so. If you see your reports or printout from our reports, it's gonna look like that maybe a house or. A property has a lot of permits, but it's usually for one project. Generator has mechanical and electric, so it's two for the same project, so I just wanted to make that clear.
That's it. Thank you so much.
Are there any, uh, comments, uh, from the board on, on Jill's report?
I don't have any.
Alright, well then, I'll, I'll go ahead and accept the report as, as it was submitted. Last item on, on my agenda is, uh, my liaison report, and that's for the planning commission, which we talked about, but then also, uh, the. The Penny Pack Ecological Restoration Trust, they did not meet this previous month, the next meeting will be, uh, in March, so. Uh, we'll hear from them, hear more about that at a later time, that concludes my agenda items, and I'll return it back to you, President Kurtz.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mueller, next, the chair recognizes Commissioner Pace, Chair of the Public Works Committee.
President Kurtz. Okay, review trash and recycle. Bid specifications. So back in August, uh, we brought up our trash's contract, the five-year contract is done at the end of this year. So we have to put it back out, at that time, we put it on the website, Facebook. Um, questionnaires, basically, asking residents what type of crap, trash they prefer. And how often, I do have some stats that I just wanna share with you based on the feedback we got. Seventy-seven point seven percent of residents. They responded, um, they could change the automated trash collection while keeping two weekly collections. Twenty percent of their respondents thinks they would need a second toter. Fifty-one point one percent of respondents did not think they could reduce to one weekly trash collection. Forty-eight point six.
Can, what, what was that last one, uh, Joe?
Fifty, fifty-one percent of respondents did not think they could reduce to one pickup per week. Forty-eight percent of respondents would generally consider a smaller two. Sixty-nine percent of respondents put out between zero and three bulk items per year. Thirty-six percent of respondents think that pre-scheduled bulk pickup with the Skerrazem from using the service at all. Twenty-one percent of respondents utilize yard waste pickup every week. So basically, we were told that the current. Style of trash recycle that we use now, the contract, they're not gonna renew it with manual labor, coming to picking our trash up, so they're gonna switch to the automated system. So basically. To keep the same service, it would, would, it would go up tremendously our cost.
If then.
If manual, but we're told, we're not gonna get any bids for manual, so it'd be auto.
Commissioner, uh, just one thing to clarify, Republic has told us they will not bid. Um, but ultimately, we're recommending we still put that as an option, um, that we get pricing for in case someone else submits a bid for that.
Yeah, so I was getting ready to kick it over to you, Chris.
I couldn't help myself.
If you wanna go through the, the, uh, the business or what, what we're asking of the different trash companies, because I know Mascar won't even bid at the last time, correct?
I'm, I'm sorry to do this to you, Joe, so, M- Mascar did bid last time.
Go ahead.
So, um, Mascar did bid, they just bid double the price of Republic, and they were the only two bidders that we had. So what we're trying to do is recognize that there's changes in the market, and there's information that has been shared with us that. If we didn't provide for a list of options. Um, we were either going to experience a dramatic cost increase, or kind of have the panic moment that we don't get bidders for the type of service that we want. So what we're trying to do is put the board in a position to have several options to choose from. Um, as well as then supporting, uh, those options with the survey data, um, that Commissioner Pace started to, to deep, to detail. So what we have, um, kind of put together at this point. Is kind of working through a, a, a list of the, the pricing to get. Um, and every contract kind of scope that we put out for bid, will have a couple of common elements to it. So the first is that they'll be for five years. Um, the second is that it's going to include both collection and disposal. Until this point, those have been separate contracts for us, um, but that is not a sustainable approach, kind of moving ahead. So we'll allow each, uh, hauler on the collection side to name their disposal site, which can also hopefully yield some more competitive pricing. Um, and then the one thing that Republic and other haulers have provided feedback for us, right now, on your second collection of the week, you can put out a bulk item. Um, and depending on the size, it's one or two, um, and that does not have to be pre-scheduled. I think in the way that the, the collection models are changing, what they're asking is that they would like to actually have. In the same way with, where you call in and get a sticker for white goods, if you want a bulk item collected, you have to call and pre-schedule that. That will allow the hauler to know where they need to go on a given day, given the staff that they have and the, um, the, the trucks that they would need to send out to be able to facilitate that. So those will be, will be kind of the common elements. And then if there is an automated, uh, or a switch to automated collection on trash, the township would be purchasing the toders. Um, in the same way that the township owns the ones that residents already have for recycling, so those are your common elements. So then, we're going to get kind of three different prices for three different kind of, uh, collection, uh, scopes. So the first is the exact collection generally that we have today. So still providing manual twice-per-week trash collection, and then the automated once-per-week recycling. The thing that we know though, is, and this is what we were talking about before, Republic has told us they will not submit pricing for that. So if we generally like Republic as the collector, this would not be something that would allow us to keep Republic. Perhaps they could surprise us and submit pricing, but that's what they've told us to date. Um, we are not going to require that each, uh, entity submitting a bid has to submit pricing for each concept. Because again, if we like Republic, we want them to be able to submit bids for the other, uh, project scopes. Um, and not preclude them from bidding, because the one that they, they told us they wouldn't do, we are still seeking pricing for. So that's option one, status quo, but that would likely yield a new hauler. Option two is to switch trash collection to automated, and do that twice per week. Um, and then maintain our automated once-per-week recycling. This is the, the main one that Republic has told us that I think they would try to provide their most competitive pricing, um. And again, this would involve the township purchasing the toders and making sure that they would be delivered, uh, in time for the first collection in January of twenty-twenty-six. And then the second, or the, the, uh, third option. Um, would be to, just so that we're aware of the pricing, even though fifty percent of the survey respondents have said this does not work for them. Um, to get pricing for once-per-week trash and once-per-week recycling. Um, so just to see kind of fully realized if ultimately with, kind of where the industry is going with these collection models. Um. What would the pricing be, so that you're also aware, if we're ultimately going to end up recommending the twice-per-week. Just what is the price difference to do that, we'll be able to quantify that by being able to get the, uh, the bid pricing for that. So then, on top of those, kind of separate of the base contract. We seek alternate pricing for some of the additional programs that we provide through the contracted hauler. So the first two have to do with yard waste. One of the things that Republic had told us that is a, a major cost driver, is that we have a weekly curbside, uh, yard waste collection. So we want to get pricing for the program as it exists today, um, but then also give you another option to be able to weigh, if we understand that. Uh, eighty percent of our residents, under the survey data, tell us that they do not utilize this service weekly. We wanna get pricing on weekly, and then pricing on some amount less, if that's every other week, or if it's monthly. Um, we're going to talk with the hauler to see kind of what might yield the biggest price differential, and then get pricing for that. So again, you would have that on your menu of options. And then finally, um, alternate three, which is probably one that we're not going to use often, because we might have a kind of cheaper and better path to do this. But a- another great feature of our, uh, recycling program here in Lower Moreland is providing no additional cost to e-waste recycling. Um, so that's where we have the container up at Public Works, we get a price from the hauler to both give us that container and then haul it to the designated, uh, recycling site. Um, so if we continue that program under those current guidelines, um, we want to know how much those individual, uh, hauls to the disposal site would cost. So we think that between those three kind of primary options defining like the base program. Plus getting pricing that helps maybe control cost a bit on the yard waste side, and understanding the e-waste component. We'll set the board up in the greatest position, once we have the pricing. To be able to make a decision that kind of puts all of the data points in there that, that will help you make that decision, so I will be able to run five-year projections on. Uh, the trash fund and what trash fee would be necessary to fund each of those programs once we have the pricing. And then you can utilize, alright, what's your cost tolerance, we're at three hundred fifty dollars a year today. So I can let you know for each of the next five years what we would project that fee to be. Um, and then be able to utilize the survey data, um, I guess, in a bit more detail. To then inform, alright, if the fee needs to go from three fifty to four fifty for whatever program, here's how people have responded to that so far. So I'll try to give that in a succinctive, uh, detail, at the point that we have all of the pricing, and I can work out the, the fund projections as to what the trash fee needs to be. So, kind of similar conversation as what we had back in August, of just, we're trying to maintain all of your options in front of you. Understanding that there's either going to be higher cost, or some sort of program change that we will need to communicate. Um, but trying to give as much lead time as possible, one, for the board to make their decision. And two, to actually implement the changes that are happening with toders, uh, being rolled out, if it is a different hauler needing to. Bring them online and determine the routes and all of the things that go into that. So that's where we are today, so I guess requesting the board's feedback, if there's any additional ways that you would like us to look at this. Uh, because ultimately, we need to advertise a bid, um, sometime between April and June. To have a shot at success at getting this thing rolled out for January of twenty-twenty-six.
Chris, how many people actually responded to this survey?
Uh, over four hundred.
Is it, um, is it common that a township would go to bid with multiple options? Ask a provider to, to bid on whichever one they, they feel they can do? Um, I know it's been a lot since we've done that kind of stuff, but.
So, yeah, I guess the.
Yeah, your audio's not making it.
We're having a hard time hearing you, Sean.
I, I, I.
It's just the quality of the feedback is bad.
Good, try again.
Yeah, Manjor, did you hear my question, or?
I did, so, and just generally, uh. Sean's question is just, is it common to, to prepare the bid in this way, um, and have the haulers kind of determine what, um, what options they will bid on? So the first thing I'll point out is that we are, there are many other municipalities that do this, um. But I think it's more common to either have, have the two other collection options that we don't have here, one is that the municipality does the collection. And the other is that the residents are in the free market, they can contract with whatever hauler they wish, and then the township is out of it entirely. So we're in a relatively small group that does, uh, single hauler through a third-party contract that we provide for everybody. Within, I think, the population of municipalities that do it that way, um, this is the approach. Um, the thing that had informed our discussion back in August, in addition to me talking with Republic. Um, we had the bid results from Middletown Bucks County. That had actually put out ten different options, they got like super granular on, uh, some of like the more specific collection types. I think we can avoid some of that, uh, to reduce the overall number of options, but we're kind of piggybacking off of their concept. Um, plus, it's kind of how we've always done it ourselves as well, having several options, trying to get as many, uh. Price points as possible to help inform. If we can avoid the board having to make a really tough decision because we got enough options and somebody prices it competitively. That's kind of your best-case scenario, and what has always played out to date, we just are, we need to set the expectation that we don't think the old way of doing it. Um, is going to yield a result that is as palatable as it previously was.
Okay, yeah, I think my, uh, where I'm getting at with that was just. Did you, do you, is there any risk in, in taking this approach, that they would only bid for options that are like the least? Like giving the least amount of service that would put us in a spot where we can only pick between a couple, it sounds like. It's, we're more likely to get pricing across all of the options we put out there, if we put multiple options.
Yeah, and I think because we're only doing three options, that's really pretty contained compared to municipalities that might do like eight or ten. Um, and say, if we did it away where we, we required everybody to submit for every level of pricing. Just my concern in that is, if we know that the current hauler won't bid, I don't wanna put the board in that spot to lose an entity that is known. Um, so this is kind of our way to, to split those challenges where, let's not put too many options out there. Um, so that hopefully, we either get two or three bids from every haul.
Um, my last question, and then I'll let other people weigh in, um. Is it worth it for us to also in this process, consider what if any of these. Options or services, even if it's like certain slices of it, that we might provide? Knowing, of course, we might have to bring on staff, we might have to bring on equipment, but is that something we would want to entertain, or is it, should we do all? External, and only consider doing some of this stuff if we have to do it all?
Yeah, so the, the biggest driver is the two things that we know we can't provide as Lower Moreland, which are the. We, uh, the trash and recycling components, so the bulk collections, white goods. Those are such minimal cost factors, because thinking about it from the hauler's perspective. They're gonna hire staff specifically for our contract, they're going to hopefully purchase new trucks just to service our contract. So those things all being brought up online, once they exist, so little then of the cost needs to be spread out for the smaller components. Um, that I, I would not suggest we do that, we did use to provide the yard waste collection as the township. Um, and just thinking about it now, it was one that I know that Steve really, and, and us, I too, really struggled with of like. We always think that the township entity can be the one that provides the service best. Um, but there's also just thinking now, what it would take to have a trash truck large enough to do the yard waste collection. Dedicate a day for several employees to have that be the only thing that they do. And the potential impacts of, say, right now where, um, I guess February doesn't have a curbside collection, but if, say, this was January, and we're doing Christmas tree collection. But then there's a, a snowstorm on a Tuesday night, what that does to that operation. I don't know that there would be enough gained by bringing some of these back in-house, given the equipment and other things that go into it, when they're already going to exist for the purpose of this contract.
That makes sense, thank you very much.
Manager Bob. Oh, go ahead, Dennis, you go.
Yeah, I, I had a couple comments and, and, uh, questions, so, um, the first is. You know, my, my preference is to, is to lean towards an automated collection, and, and part of that is. I, I don't like seeing, you know, a bunch of banged-up cans blowing around the neighborhood, um, you know, outside, so I, I think it's, I think it's cleaner for the township, so. If, you know, the fact that it's very well gonna be better pricing for automated pickup and we'll have the toders, I, I think it, it looks a lot better in the neighborhood during trash. During, uh, trash collection. My, my second comment is around, you know, the, the conversation on, you know, I think, Chris, you mentioned it on town, some town. My my second comment is around, you know, the the conversation on, you know, I think, Chris, you mentioned it on how some townships, they. It's kind of a free market and each homeowner contracts for for what they what they want to do. I kind of prefer the way we do it with a single hauler because again, it's, you know. Trashes out on one night in the neighborhood or two nights if it's twice a pickup. You don't have, you don't have uh cans out every single day of the week. Trucks come in at every every single day of the week and it's a lot more predictable. So. I'm certainly in favor of maintaining a contract, you know, with that for those reasons. And my my last comment is um it's it's really a question. It's 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 a two-part question. The first is. Do you think we have any any issues with illegal dumping of flammable liquids? And other hazardous materials and similar to. Similar to what we do with the e-waste. Is it beneficial maybe to have a central collection of hazardous waste, but limited hazardous waste to say flammable liquids? Essentially fuel oil or fuel fuel oil oils and and uh regular fuel. That we would have a central collection at some point. Now, I I know the county does two collections a year. Which, you know, sometimes, you know, sometimes are on the opposite side of the county to be able to to do it. And if you don't catch it just right, you you can't get rid of your style gasoline. And I'm I'm wondering whether or not that, you know, if that's something that we should ask for. To have a central collection, say at the Public Works, where we could monitor it, that it would be, you know, not. Open it up to all hazardous materials, but but maybe fuel oil, fuel. You know, spent fuel or and and motor oil that we could have to limit the temptation that residents would have to try to get rid of it. In some other, in some other way. So it's really like if we think we have an issue and two, is that something that we would would want to add to the package? You know, that would be something that the Public Works Department would have to manage a little bit and and have an essential pickup, but. You know, if we think that's beneficial. So that's that's all my comments.
Steve, can you come up to the podium for the the first part of that question that's about the illegal dumping? The what comes to mind for me is I know that there's times where trucks will get flagged at the disposal site. Which the it was specifically like a toxic, like medical waste issue that I remember at one time. Uh is there, would that be something that the, because the the site that the? The trash goes to has to be a D E P like permitted site following state regulations. We would know.
Goes and gets scanned.
Okay.
That goes and gets scanned and if there's any kind of, and that that does happen when someone's getting treatment for. An illness, it it happens more often than you'd think.
Well, I'm thinking about also, like, not only putting it in the in the garbage, but hey, I got a half a gallon of. You know, old gasoline that I don't want to throw into my car to try to burn it up. So I'm either gonna throw it down the drain or I'm gonna dump it out in back of my house.
Yeah, we we do get those calls a lot. And we do refer them to the the county's several pickups that they have. Which I understand, like you said, sometimes you miss it.
There's two a year, you know, they're, you know, not very convenient for people, so.
I can look into, you know, the same recyclers that we use for our motor oil. Um, stuff like that, paint. See what kind of cost that would be to have something.
It's like another bid item that, you know, we we can offer to people is, you know, because we. Uh you know, this is going to change a little bit. Maybe we say, hey, you can get rid of your hazardous waste at the public waste or the public works department. You know, if you're a township resident, if you have, you know, some motor oil, we can maybe even limit it because it's expensive to get rid of, but just something to consider.
And I think the I we can take that under advisement and I think the the good news is that that is not. Um, I guess we we can review that outside of the contract scope with the hauler. If it's a program that we can define and and have a cost for, we can see how we can fit that into whatever the recommended trash fee is going to be. And kind of deal with that separate of like the daily trash considerations and then advertise that in the same way that. People can, as you said, the e-waste or that there's uh mulch that can be picked up. It can just be something that would be available at the public works yard. I just don't know enough about the regulations around the disposal of those things as to how complicated it would be for us to set that up.
Just in F Y A, Dennis, there are six hazardous waste collections per year. But, you know, only two are in this air, you know, this side of the county. Two are in the middle, two are at the other end. So that's kind of how they try to do it. Alright. But they already missed. I know we've missed four years, but we haven't done it. It just sits in our garage until the next year.
And that's and that's what I'm trying to avoid, of holding on to it in buildings that create a potential fire hazard and. The temptation to do something else with it, so.
Chris, one question for you. Are we keeping the uh hole open for the trash collection?
Uh, yes. Leah, can you confirm that that's still an active link, right?
Yeah.
Chris, I have a question. Um I'm fine with the three options and the three alternates. And I'm not really, I can't remember. I remember film survey out, but I'm not sure if there was like a little, you know, an empty box. I mean, I think there was. But um basically, I guess it will be another alternate. One of our residents brought this up. I don't recall any names out for privacy uh in Ward Three and since. I've looked into it and a few handfuls of residents in all different wards have asked me also. Um and I think it's great that everybody wants to go down this road. Um, some people, you know, dig it and put it in their ground. My mom used to do that, but you have to really make sure it's really buried so the foxes or different animals don't. Dig up its compost. Um so I'm not sure if we could have like an alternate for, um you know.
Food scraps.
Yeah, for uh picking up compost. I'm not sure. If these haulers do something like that or that's something separate that we have to have. Um our residents look into separately, but it's something I'd like to look into.
Sure. Um so I guess Steve, E J, and I will get together to take a look at some programs from other municipalities. Like I know Steve Abington has that with their own municipal collection, right?
Not not yet, but they're talking about.
Okay, so they don't yet. So essentially, we would be looking at an an alternate on the scale of yard waste that requires a separate can and separate collection with a specified day. And identifying the staff that would be necessary under the contract to provide that service. Um, we can try to spec that out, um but that will just, it will be a lot to build between now and April to get this out successfully.
Right. I'm just thinking, um you could, they could probably pick up like once a month, you know what I mean? If there's a decent sized can, but. You know, I don't know what the options are, but yes, as an alternate number four. Um I've been getting a lot of calls about that compost.
We will look into it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, back to you. Us, Commissioner Pace. So I guess tonight, Chris, you just wanted the board's uh feedback. And you're gonna get to work on this pitch package. Is that right?
Correct. Yeah, so right now, the only thing that any of the questions have yielded that would impact the. Um, the bids that we are seeking is adding a fourth alternate for some level of collect, curbside collection of food waste.
Okay, back to you, Commissioner Pace.
Any comments from the public?
Alright, um next item on my agenda, L, Public Works Department. We'll kick it over to Steve. Let's give you a couple of things. Um. Same trash that, as I remind you, that curbside yard waste is done for February more. If you have any, you can bring it up to the public works. We'll take care of it. We'll help you as much as we can. It's just not worthwhile to send a truck out, usually February more. Um, we had several snow and ice events. We've used about five hundred tons of salt so far this year. That includes we've made about twenty thousand gallons of brine, which we've uh sprayed and seems to be working out well this year. Um, we got some information back from PennDOT on our floodgate application. They have a lot of questions. So actually, we have a meeting with Bowman Friday on uh to answer some of the questions they had. And the changes they were asking for. Hopefully we can get that project going. Um, we're in the free stall cycle, so I remind everyone when you see a pothole, I don't care where it is, you can call us, call Kelly. But if it is on state road, it is the state's responsibility. You can call the state. They have a nice website you can log into. But you can always call us and we'll forward it on the PennDOT too.
Thanks, Steve.
Um, Ridgeway's playground is done. Unfortunately, with the weather, I haven't been able to get down there to uh finish the the prep work so we can get the chips in. But uh as soon as the weather clears, we'll get back. And spring's coming. So already got called about baseball and softball and spring soccer, so it's coming. Any other suggestions?
Any questions?
Steve, for your uh calendar sake, that meeting with PennDOT for the floodgates is tomorrow.
Oh, I'm sorry, the twelve, yes.
Yep.
Steve, how much salt do we have left in the bin?
So I, as we use it, I order it. It slows down now, but we have probably six hundred tons.
Okay.
So we're not at our budgeted, uh we budget a thousand tons, we're at around six hundred.
Okay. I don't have liaison, H V A A. Right now, they're in winter workout for baseball. They rent a facility up in Newtown, so that's every Sunday and Monday. Uh basketball's still going. Got a month and a half left of the season for basketball. Uh winner series for soccer, the turf fields open. They've been doing that at that uh on weekends. They have uh other clubs from surrounding areas who. Don't have turf fields, so they come to us and they play at Valley Center Park. Two more weeks left of that. And well, it's about it, three, two, nine.
Thank you, Commissioner Pace. Next, the chair recognizes Commissioner Blain. Guys, you, Sean, over to you for the.
Thank you, Commissioner Kurtz. Um, alright, for my report today, I have four items on my agenda. Uh, I'll start by just apologizing ahead of time for all the costs that's been through. Been getting over the flu, so um I'll try to keep it at a minimum. Um, first item on my agenda is uh the animals ordinance, uh updates that we spoke about last month for feral cats. So last month, board authorized advertising for an ordinance amendment to the township's animals regulation. By doing two things, one, or specifically referencing feral and stray cats. Uh and also adding another tier to the violations and penalties section, which can elevate the township's action to the Montgomery County Court of Common Pleas. Uh, social rights office advertised the ordinance as prescribed by law. Uh and so now we are in a position to proceed with this consideration, which I would like to recommend that we do. Uh before we do, however, are there any questions from the board about the proposed amendment?
Can we go over what changes? What the changes are?
Sure, uh bear with me for one second. I will pull them up.
If you'd like me to do it, it might be a little bit easier.
Please, yeah, save my voice.
Your feedback is a little.
Yeah, we're not hearing your audio, Sean.
Alright, sorry about that, guys.
So um the proposed ordinance um makes a couple of changes and. First is going to be that at um at section seventy-two four, we we had kind of what I would consider a. Uh maybe a deficient or thin definition of what it is to be a nuisance for a, to to keep cats or to feed. Um stray or feral cats. So we provide for a more robust definition of what it means to be a nuisance. To keep cats or to harbor cats in that way. Specifically, I'll I'll quote the language that it shall be unlawful for any person to feed feral. Or stray cats if such feeding causes a nuisance to neighbors or adjacent property owners. Um, then the the second major change is that we added a section. Um, that says after you've been convicted two times for violating this ordinance. The township's authorized to pursue equitable relief at the Court of Common Pleas. So while we have. An ordinance that allows for fines of not less than two hundred and fifty, which is in addition to not more than six hundred dollars. Somebody could have just walked in and said, look, I'll just pay the fine and I'll continue operating and doing business just as I was. Ultimately, you need an order from a judge in Norris Town that actually stops the behavior because. There may be times when people just say, I'd rather just pay the fine, keep doing what I'm doing and um eventually you need somebody in a black robe. In this case, Norris Town, who would be able to actually stop the behavior. So those are the primary um changes. There are a couple amendments to definitions as well. Yeah, I'm sorry. Uh my name is Will Edinger. I'm standing in for John Rice tonight as township solicitor. That's all I have.
Alright, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Yeah, hopefully this helps uh on the audio front. Let me know if it doesn't.
Yeah.
You guys can hear me okay?
Little bit better, Sean.
I can hear you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, cool. Um, any other questions from the board relating to these amendments?
I don't have any questions.
Any questions from the audience?
Come on up. We do have a follow-up comment.
Okay.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, my name is Marie Eastwood. Uh, my address is five fifty-nine Ann Street here in Huntington Valley. Um, I'd like to uh make a comment about the uh punitive measures that the township is taking. Uh with regards to the feral cat issue. Uh last year, there was a feral cat issue um on my street. Um, which was alleviated back in September. Where uh the total number of twenty-three cats were uh trapped. And transferred to the Montgomery County S T C A where they were uh euthanized within forty-eight hours. Because nobody claimed these cats. Now, um, I was involved with this because um I had been feeding and uh harboring the cats. I was um sent to court and in turn I uh lost my case. Um, I just wanted to make a comment about the fact that um. I have no confidence in Mr. Middleman to be unbiased since he only depends upon one complaint. Without doing further investigation. His experience in animal control is doubtful. If we had a quality or qualified animal control officer. He or she could identify feral, stray, or just plain lost cats. We have had lost cats in the neighborhood. As a matter of fact, my neighbor across the street, her cat. Got out and was lost for a month. He has now since been returned to the house. But what happened if someone saw the stray cat and thought it was feral? And then they took it upon themselves to report it to the township? Um and in turn, um either had this cat trapped or transported to the S B C A. Now, the S B C A in Montgomery County is now closed because of their euthanasia process. It is now under investigation and um any cats that are trapped cannot be taken to the Abington location because it is closed. Um. Mr. Middleman depends on complaints to basically generate his fines for the township. Um, I have been fined, um and I did pay the fine for harboring uh and feeding cats. Um, in turn, um I was physically told not to feed the cats any longer. All my uh shelters were removed. Um, I was told by the township that they would review the area. Uh it's never been inspected. And um what I'd like to do is just make a mention that if you're going to depend upon just one complaint. Without going further um around the neighborhood and uh asking other people. Um, is there a cat problem? Is there uh a um an unsanitary issue? And um what we'd like to do is be able to see at least photographs. Uh dated photographs of of any unsanitary conditions that any of these feral cats would be uh performing. Now, that the, I haven't seen any feral pets in our area at all. Most of the cats in the area are indoor-outdoor cats and they um belong to people. So I just wanted to make a comment that um I believe that these roles are a little punitive. And that they um they should just be um considered uh at least. Not as restrictive. So if um. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you. I can listen to you.
Are there um any other comments from the audience? Are there um, any other comments from the audience? Anybody on Zoom?
Yeah, there's a lot.
Looks like we have someone on Zoom.
Yes.
I would also like to make a comment when I'm able.
Yeah.
Can I speak?
Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Catherine Kraus, twenty-three seventy-eight Philmont Avenue, Huntington Valley, PA. Um, I just wanted to make a comment that I've lived in this area for twelve years. Um, I do help with T N R rescues um, when needed. Um, so I do have experience with stray cats, feral cats, all different types of cats, indoor-outdoor cats um. With living in this area right down the street from Anne, connecting, which is a few houses from me, um, I've had no issues with the strays, ferals, nothing at all, I've never seen any, any um, you know, debris or filthy conditions. Um, they don't seem to bother anybody in the neighborhood. There's a few other neighbors that are only a few houses away from this complaint that feel the same way, they weren't able to get onto the Zoom, but they were pretty upset that um, you know, we all watch out for the cats, um, since some of the shelters have been taken away, we've all seen more activity of the cats crossing in the middle of Philmont Avenue, which is causing like traffic conditions um, because they have nowhere to go. Um, and I also have three cats of my own, which were all feral cats at one point, and sometimes it does happen, the cats do get out, they do escape. Nobody does it on purpose, my cats were used to living outside, they're now indoors. Um, but they do get out and from hearing from, you know, several of the neighbors that the cats were trapped and taken to the S P C A, um, it's a high concern for me because my cats, every now and then, they quick slip out the door because I have three vibrant kids. And it's a real concern for me that, you know, with this going into effect that, you know, not feeding them, not keeping the shelters because they really don't bother anyone in the neighborhood. I'm always around the neighborhood trying to help out, I don't see any, anything that would cause disease, um, they do get fixed anytime that there's a new cat in the area that isn't recognized, my friend Bob, who's on the Zoom, he comes and he picks them up, he treats them with the T N R and then re-releases them back in the area. Um, and then also, if we've seen any that had any issues, we take them to get treated with our own money. Um, so I really don't see concerns with that. I just think it's a little steep for people to be, in the neighborhood to be taking and um, collecting the cats and taking them off to the S P C A without talking to the neighbors or having concern that it was somebody's pet that we're looking for.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Anyone else on Zoom?
Yes.
Okay, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Fern Andre, I'm at six oh six Barrett Avenue, I live directly behind Mrs. Eastwood. I have lived here since two thousand and three and in the last several years, I have watched two feral cats turn into over fifty. I, what Mrs. Eastwood said about the twenty-three being trapped, she had nothing to do with trapping them, other people were trapping them, but there were another twenty-eight or so that were trapped by another neighbor. In terms of feral cats still not roaming, this is all from two cats from several years ago and because she fed them and fed them and fed them and fed them, it turned into over fifty cats, there are still four ferals from that original two from years ago. I have spent over three thousand dollars a year and a half ago to put up a fence in my backyard and wire it, the cats have continued to jump it. I have a blind dog and a little grandson that want to go in the backyard and God forbid if they, those cats come by, I can't keep track of them urinating and having feces in my yard to the point where I can't, I have to watch the dog and my, I have to watch every single thing that my little grandson, who's only a year and a half does when it's springtime and summertime. It has been more than a nuisance, it has been so incredibly stressful to cope with, especially when the weather breaks and the smell of the urine and the smell of the feces has permeated my backyard to the point where I can't open my windows in the springtime. And I thank God for the other neighbors that have trapped those feral cats. And I'm sorry for anyone who's lost a cat or a possible trapping of a cat who was someone else's. But my God, over fifty cats that started from two cats because my neighbor absolutely, no matter what we asked, refused to stop feeding them. She has put up another fence, so there's no, she thinks there's no possible way that I can see what she's doing. There have been so many behaviors on her part that were so disrespectful to her neighbors, to the community, for people's health, for their family's health, and truly for just to be able to feel that you can enjoy your own backyard just because you live near the Eastwoods. We have reported.
Let's not get this personal, let's try to focus on the ordinance at hand, please.
Well, I agree, based upon what I know as fact from what I have seen from Mrs. Eastwood's behaviors when she has been fined. She, I have watched her, because it's not, it didn't stop in September, as she stated. I agree that the fines should be stiffer based on the, the what presentation is this evening concerning the changes to the ordinance. I absolutely agree that they should be stiffer, I am watching what she continues to do because.
Man, thank you for your comment, we're at two minutes right now, if you can wrap it up, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else?
Is there any other, any other comments about the, the ordinance?
Hi, yes, this is Richard Crusoe, five-six-five Ann Street. Um, we are, we have been to court regarding this issue, we have provided multiple pictures of feces and of the property destruction that we have experienced due to the constant drawl of cats to our property from people feeding them. We have also been provided with humane traps from the township and this was an authorized action on our part by the township. Um, we also too, I would like to note that every single cat that has been trapped was taken to the S P C A and they are scanned for microchips to ensure that any lawful owner that has the cat is contacted, every single cat, that was their process. Um, the, also too, I would like to note that at one point, we did catch our neighbor's cat and you can notate the difference of the behaviors of feral uh, cats to a domesticated cat and the cat was simply returned to our neighbor because we were not taking those cats to the S P C A. It was very obvious by the behavior of the cat that it was not a feral cat because if you've interacted with a feral cat, they, they are nasty, nasty, nasty and aggressive. And so I know that there's going to be people on here advocating for different things, however, I have, we have lived in this property for, since two thousand and thirteen. We have never had this issue until a year and a half ago and we have, and I, my husband and I have been in front of this board several times, we've met with the township several times and we have continued to plead our case that at what point does, can we not utilize our property safely for our family and for our son? Because someone really enjoys the presence of cats, like that's not a fair thing to do in this township. And other, other townships have similar ordinances and if we don't have a full-time animal control officer, then something else needs to be done because this behavior continues to happen. And it, as the, as the solicitor for the township said, the, the, the fines were just disregarded and the behavior continued. So my family and other families on this block, because there are two sides of this story on this side of the township, that who, who needs to deal with it?
Yeah, we don't have to deal with cats if we don't need to, I mean, you have the ability to bring a cat into your home and have it as a pet. You don't need to have it running around outside.
And we also want to recognize that we were very patient with our neighbors when they said that they were going to be um, taking in two feral cats and domesticating them and we never bothered those cats for two years. And it escalated from two cats up until, until the, the amount, many that uh, Ms. Andre had mentioned. I have videos that have been shared with the township of up to fifteen cats being fed, seven food bowls out. And I mean, at what point do we get our property back and I don't have to worry about my son falling face first into a pile of cat feces? And again, these cats are being T N R, but they're not being recaptured and vaccinated again to ensure that they don't have any additional diseases, parasites, fleas? The sleep colors.
Yeah, so I'm gonna, let me step in here and just, I just want to call out like, it's this is very clearly, it's a very charged issue, it's a very emotional issue, right? And the reason why it's something that we are talking about tonight, we talked about last month is because of the impact it has on the larger community. And, and I just want to make sure we're really super clear because the focus here is on the amendments to this ordinance and, and why we put them forward. You know, the ordinance permits feeding them if it causes a nuisance. And that's what we have uncovered and that's what we, we found through the process is that, you know, the care of these, these particular cats was creating a nuisance for the community. And if, only if we can prove it, does it go through the process that we are proposing to amend, right? Where we have this escalation point. So it's not just allowing for, you know, any cats get picked up now because of this change, uh, there's still a legal process that will follow, there's an escalation point if all this, all these steps can be proven. So again, I, I feel for everybody, uh, I know there's, there's lives on the line, right? There's, there's love on the line, like we have pets, we can care for these creatures, but we care for our families, we care for our friends and, and, you know, we may never see eye to eye on, on this particular issue, but I, I just want to make, bring it back to the ordinance. What we're here to do tonight is make amendments to make sure that through the legal process, there is an escalation point should the legal process show that a repeat offender has been found, that the penalties that are currently in place are not deterring the behavior that is negatively impacting the community. And that's really what we want to make sure that we have covered and that we have uh, and have protections for, for all of our residents, right? No matter what the situation is. So I'm gonna, I'm just gonna ask, I, I know there's probably a lot more people want to share, I think this is probably discussion best or outside of this room and, and in terms someplace else. Um, so unless there's any other questions or thoughts about the amendment changes specific to this particular ordinance, uh, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number seven, seven, eight as previously described.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number seven seventy-eight as described, although in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye. Thank you, and, and thank everybody, I do thank you for everyone for, you know, participating and sharing your perspective. Again, I, I know this is a, it's a highly emotional issue. All right, I want to move on to my next uh, agenda item. Uh, this is related to a traffic-related ordinance. So normally we do these on a, um, on a schedule throughout the year, but uh, this one was brought forward and we wanted to make sure that we talked about it tonight. The Traffic Safety Unit reviewed a speed and sight distance concern uh, at the intersection of Hollowell Drive Road and uh, Mansion Road. Uh, this is in Ward One, uh, and actually this is actually right up the street from where I grew up and, and live, so I'm very familiar with this particular intersection. Uh, currently as it stands, there's a stop sign on Mansion Road, uh, but there are no stop signs on any other leg of that particular intersection. Um, what I'm recommending is that the board authorize advertising for an ordinance to add stop signs to each side of Hollowell at the Mansion Road intersection. But what I want to make sure that we're clear on is, on the one hand, you know, the study data regarding observed speeds and sight distance and accident history, it does not require replacement of these additional stop signs. However, this intersection is unique because there are two driveways within the intersection itself. Uh, and there's a third intersection that is only twenty-five feet away. And so for the sake of those residents uh, who are moving in and out of their homes and, you know, having to contend with uh, lack of stop signs to potentially protect them, uh, I'd like to make a motion, or I'd like to move forward and recommend that we adopt this particular ordinance. Any questions from me and my colleagues on the board?
I um, I live around the corner. And it's a short street, there's stop signs at two, at both ends and now you want to put two in the middle. It seems a little excessive to me. And I think most of my neighbors will agree um, that, you know, uh, there will be a stop sign like every fifty feet then almost along that road, it feels like, maybe I'm exaggerating, maybe it's not fifty, maybe it's a hundred, I don't know. But I mean, all the time, and it's really not far. So.
So Commissioner, I, I, I believe that the only stop signs on Hollowell are at the Walton and Fetter's Mill intersections. So right now, you could, when you turn onto Hollowell, you can drive without stopping between Walton and Fetter's Mill.
But that's a very short distance, I mean, it's not even a quarter of a mile.
Yeah, and Ruth, you know what I'm having out there? Uh, looking and looking at this, there is a turn in the road coming one-way Hollowell and then another turn and then the straightaway and all these driveways, some of them go deep down, so when they're backing up, there's no sidewalks, there's no lights, it's, it would, you know, would be my opinions to, that it would be in the best interest of the safety of the residents to put those stop signs on Hollowell.
I mean, I'm not saying you should, I mean, I'm gonna vote against it, but um, you can, you can advertise this, but um, I have a funny feeling that people in my board are not gonna be happy, I mean, that's a lot of stop signs in a short distance.
Chief, would you um, would you be able to share what, what kicked off this initial traffic safety um, request? Was it one of the residents of that area who initiated it, was it something that you do on a regular basis?
Yes, we got a complaint um, from a resident regarding uh, speed was one concern as well as sight distance. Um, so we assigned it to our traffic safety unit, they put the, the speed signs out. Um, they measure the distances for the, from the driveways and from the crest of the hill because there is a slight crest of the hill there. Uh, so those were all the factors that as a police department, we looked at to determine if it was um, uh, reasonable for a stop sign. So that was all studied uh, by, like I said, it was one of our traffic safety officers. Um, and then made, it didn't, it didn't meet the qualifications of um, our traffic safety standards for when we would um, suggest whether it be um, more speed limit signs or any other type of signage. Um, however, as Commissioner Blain brought up, the uniqueness of the intersection with the way that literally one of the driveways comes out at like a forty-five degree angle, it goes right into the intersection. Uh, and in other driveways within the intersection and there's a third, as Commissioner Blain said as well, that is very close to that intersection. Um, so for the ease of everybody that may be coming in and out of those driveways at any one time, um, that was the, the reasoning behind the recommendation.
I was curious what.
But you.
I was curious what kicked it off, so thank you.
I'm sorry, Sean, what'd you say?
He was curious what kicked it off.
I was just saying, yeah, I was just curious what kicked it off and it sounds like it was a resident, so thank you for sharing that.
But basically, you're saying that the study data did not observe any issues, but you feel like there might be because of the.
The uniqueness of the intersection, we don't have very many intersections that have driveways that lead right into the intersections itself. Uh, so that was one of the reasons that it's brought up. But yes, sight distance is not an entire issue as well as speed, it's not an issue, that would warrant something like this.
I just worry that we become a little too reactive to one complaint sometimes. But I, I hear you, you know, I, uh, you know, maybe I'm wrong. That's why we're here, that's why there's six of us. Thank you. Thank you, Sean.
And, yeah, of course, any other questions from the board?
No questions.
Any questions from anyone in the audience? Anyone on Zoom? All right, I'm not seeing any activity. Um, with that, I'll make a motion to advertise an ordinance placing stop signs on the east and west approaches of Hollowell Drive Road at the Mansion Road. At the Mansion Road intersection.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded to advertise the traffic-related ordinance as described by Commissioner Blanton. All those in favor, please.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, the motion is still passed?
I said it right.
Back to you, Commissioner Blanton.
Alright. Onto my third item. Uh, this is the uh zoning hearing board summary. Um, I'll start by uh talking about the upcoming February agenda. Uh, the zoning hearing board will meet uh next Thursday. Uh, that's uh February twentieth. Uh, at seven P M uh in the uh building right here. There are three applications on the February agenda. The first is application number twenty-four dash thirty-seven. This is the continuation of Alex and Anna Mapati of seven-twenty Leefest Circle. They seek a variance to increase their lot coverage to thirty-six percent, where twenty-five percent is permitted to allow construction of a swimming pool. Their current lot coverage is a non-conforming thirty-one point nine percent. Application uh number twenty-five dash zero one is the application of Daniel and Kimberly Keller, thirty-seven hundred Abidale, excuse me, Abidale Drive. They seek a variance to increase their lot coverage to thirty-four percent, where thirty percent is permitted. To con- to construct a forty-foot by sixty-foot pole barn. Their current lot coverage is a non-conforming thirty-one point four percent. And finally, application number twenty-five dash zero two is the application of Sevek and Michelle Okumis of three-three-nine-two More Lane. They seek a variance to permit an accessory structure in the rear yard setback and reduce the setback from ten feet to four and a half feet. They wish to construct a swimming pool. Uh, they will also consider revisions to their formal hearing rules. Um, any questions from the board on the uh upcoming applications for zoning hearing board?
I do not. Anyone else?
Can you guys, did I lose you?
There you go.
Nope, we can hear you, Dennis.
I think we lost Sean.
Nope, I'm here.
Any comments, Commissioner Mueller?
No, okay, I I it it cut out on my end. I'm okay, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, anything from the crowd on upcoming applications? Alright, if not, I'll move on to um the January meeting decision. So the zoning hearing board made two decisions at their January meeting. The first was for application number twenty-four dash thirty-three. This was the application of seventy-eight Tomlinson Center LLC. They sought variances to permit and reduce parking. They sought six variances and all were granted. And finally, application number twenty-four dash forty. This was the application of Robert and Alona uh Supliku for the Randolph Street Lot. Who saw variances in the floodplain conservation district to permit construction of a new home. The two variances were granted. Any questions about last month's location decisions?
Do not in the room here. Any questions, Commissioner Mueller? Okay, he doesn't have any questions. You can proceed.
Alright. Okay, if uh there are no other questions, then uh final point of my agenda, my liaison positions. Uh, my first liaison position is the zoning hearing board, which I just reported on. And my second is the Building Code Board of Appeals, who has not met, so I have nothing to report. And with that, I will finish my report and hand it back to you, Commissioner Hertz.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Blanton. Next, the chair recognizes Commissioner Canal and Chair of the Public Safety Committee.
Yeah, to President Keritz. First up on my agenda is Chief Smith with your report.
Evening. What was submitted, but just some highlights from it. Uh, we did have. One thousand eight hundred forty-six calls uh for service in January, so that was our highest in quite some time. Uh, was quite a few weather-related events as um Steve won't have brought up. Uh, which generally adds some more calls for us there, and I do thank them for all their work on the railways, which definitely helped for us. Uh, we did have some more death from murders, as everybody um has seen on our social media posts. Uh, they were much earlier in the month in January and then into the middle of the month. Um, still, every single one of them was an unlocked vehicle, as has been the trend. Um, good news is, we did make um a few arrests. Um, a group was caught in the act, and that falls also gonna help clear some. From twenty-twenty-four as well. So we are making some clearances in them. Um, but they are still happening, unfortunately. So we are still continuing to push that out on social media, reminder to lock your cars. Uh, certainly will make our jobs a lot easier there. Did have a few big arrests, one that I was uh very proud of the officers, a self-initiated suspicious vehicle. That they investigated. Uh, they recovered a firearm as well as uh what appears to be over one kilogram of either heroin or fentanyl. Which is still at the lab being uh analyzed, so uh if you see anything, that's quite a large amount of heroin or fentanyl will be seized. Um, and at least right in my time here, it's one of the largest recoveries that I've seen in our, in my time here, my twenty-two years, so. Uh, great job, self-initiated work, one of our newest officers. Um, and sometimes the smallest um unusual occurrences can lead to something like this, which is a good thing. So it kind of takes that off the streets. Like I said, we took a firearm and a a large quantity of drugs off the streets. Uh, after your report, we had our second set of tobacco compliance checks in January, and we had zero violations this time, thankfully. We had four of our establishments that sold last time. Um, so thankfully, that seems to be working, and they get cited. They're now more cognizant of that. Uh, did have two events to help the community and the officers in January, so we had the victim services of Montgomery County come out. Uh, trained all of our supervisors in some of the ways that they can help uh victims provide services and make sure that any resident that is a victim of a crime. Has everything they possibly need. Um, so that was a great thing that our supervisors got to go through. And we also had the Recovery Center of P A come out, uh also train all of our supervisors in some ulterior wellness, peer support, trauma support. Um, and then recognizing some of the signs and symptoms that affect not only officers, but everybody in the general public. Um, to help uh address addiction and things like that, that that we can certainly do our best to. Um, some upcoming events, we are taking part in, taking part in our first ever Community Thursdays. That's put on by D Well Bakery and Cafe. Um, so that'll be Thursday, February twenty-seventh from eleven to one. Um, we'll have some information there, a few of our officers, myself, the lieutenant, um, and like I said, some civilians, probably some of our officers as well will stop by. Uh, we have, like I said, some information and just kind of a meet and greet to let everybody see us there. Uh, we also have, I've arranged um a meet and greet with all the clergy in Lowermoreland. From all the the parishes and the churches, the synagogues. Um, just to kind of see what they need from us, what we can provide them, and just also to introduce myself to them. Um, and make sure they know they have a resource in us, and we can usually use them as a resource as well when we have some traumatic events in the town. And so that's for Wednesday, March twenty-sixth. Still waiting on some of the responses. Uh, last but not least, happy to report all of our new A Ds and medical equipment is in from our twenty-twenty-four Ascent Grant that we won. There were awarded, excuse me. So this will put us in line with the ambulance company with what they are carrying, so now our A Ds are interoperable with theirs, what they already have. Um, it's our first new A Ds in fifteen years, and the training has been started with all of the officers. Kind of streamlined what we're carrying, and also it's good to get some more pressures to move with, so that was all benefit of that twenty-twenty-four Ascent Grant, so.
You want to tell people what an A D is?
A D, yeah. So it's an automated external defibrillator. So someone with a sudden cardiac issue, we have them in every one of our police cars that's on the road. So we have, any one time, we could have seven police cars in every one of them having a A D, so. And they've made some saves throughout the years, and thankfully, the responsiveness of our ambulance company is also very, very good, so. Uh, they're able to take that extended uh care from the officers who weren't trained. Good thing.
Any questions from the board? Anything from the public? Thank you, Chief Smith. Fire Marshal Shale.
Good evening, good evening, Commissioners. Just a couple of quick things. Uh, a lot of, a lot of calls, fire calls in Montgomery County uh the past month, so. We've had a good mutually program with Cheltenham, Avetton, Jacobtown, and Uppermoreland. Uh, we had a fire in the twelve sixty-four Mettler Lane back on January sixth. It was a kitchen fire. Crew's there, nice job of taking care of that. Um, we had a, uh, as you know, back in December, we had an issue with the Huntington Valley skilled nursing. They had a major water leak. Since that time, uh. Ted, myself, and Steve had been out there. They are, they have basically gutted the first and part of the second floor. They're starting the permit process to redo it. They're looking to get the residents sometime back and maybe sometime end of March, beginning of April. Um, I've been working with D E P at Byberry, Huntington Pike at the gas station uh for the new tank. I've been working with them on inspections and getting that taken care of and getting the contaminated dirt removed, so that's still an ongoing project. And we had some issues at Carson Terrace during this uh month with broken pipes and a fire alarm system that wasn't working correctly. Uh, Ted Mittelman and I sat down with the H O A, Carson Terrace Management, their attorney, the Smerker Contractors. We got everything taken care of. We had a uh large uh fire alarm test. Uh, this month, and the system is back up and running, and uh everybody's happy, right? As of right now, so. Not quite, hope that keeps going that way, so otherwise, uh, we had a couple of U N Os. Uh, we had some cancellations due to weather and due to some illnesses, but we're back on on top of it as well.
Any questions from the board?
I have one question for Fire Marshal Shali, the uh with regard to the gas station.
Yes.
There is no, is there any harm to the poll?
No, there was contaminated soil. It was, it was removed. It will be removed at a la- you know, at a later date by the contractor. I've spoken with D E P uh in person, and I've been on site with the D E P. They had um. They had a D E P representative with a meter that checks for the dirt. Once that's taken care of, we get a called a closure report, which shows that uh the dirt's been remediated, fresh dirt has been put in, the tank was. Uh, installed correctly, and then the tank is, once a tank is installed, the contractor does all the inspections from the tank to the the pole. So that's all been in order, and I'm getting updates once a week until the job is done.
Appreciate it. So basically, it's just on site?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
It was an older tank that was leaking into the ground.
Yes, and we have, we have, we have, we have residents who have the same, have the same issue. They have tanks that are leak. They get, they get a leaking tank, and they have to, they had to radiate the dirt. It's, it's, that's just a bigger tank and a and a bigger area, that's all, yeah.
Thank you, Fire Marshal.
Thank you. Chief Showmaker.
Good evening, everyone. In closing, you have to have a copy of my monthly report before we get into the report. I, I, one of the goals that I've set for this year is to try to come up with a common reporting system between the two organizations. Uh, it's going to take some time to get that into place, but once it is in place, you're gonna see a change in my report. It will be more performance-based. So we can show you what we're actually doing and the improvements that we're trying to make and and qualify those against that. But until we can get to that point, it's a little bit challenging, because the information we currently can get does not offer that to us as best as possible. With that said, uh, there's a number of bullet points that have been included into my report. Just uh highlight a copy of a couple of those. We uh have the new tower ladders, you know, in service. Uh, there's been continuous training every day on that from both uh organizations, and most of those are joint trainings, which I'm happy to report. You probably see it all over town, driving around, we're trying to get everybody trained, driving it and operating it. It's pretty extensive, because it's a pretty sophisticated piece of equipment. Uh, as of January sixth, we have both organizations now operating under Station nineteen number with County nine-one-one Center. Uh, all the units down at the Huntington Valley Station are nineteen identified. The Brennethen Station is nineteen-one, and our ambulance is nailed on three-nineteen from the old three-fifty-five. Uh, that required a little bit of a licensure change for us that we're in the process of on the ambulance. With our Medicaid Medicare billings, and uh that is still in the process, but just about wrapped up. Uh, I attended a P A career chiefs meeting to get the state updates for the first quarter of the year. We spent two days out in Uppermoreland, uh, meeting with the Fire Commissioner, the Emergency Management Director from the Commonwealth, and a number of other. Uh, elected officials throughout, and a couple of state representatives that were there, which uh. To my surprise, I got to talk to a couple of them during the break, and they informed me that they're actually watching what we're doing down here in Lowermoreland and Brennethen with consolidation attempts. And uh they're pretty pleased with what they're seeing, so they're gonna be following that as we go through, and hopefully uh we'll be pleased with what we're doing as well. Uh, we conducted a joint meeting of the officers from both organizations. We set up a number of working groups to. Start to tackle joint purchasing, common themes, common uniforms, common equipment. It's made up of representatives from both groups. They're small working groups, and we're, I'm happy to report that. Immediately, we started getting uh results from that. Meetings were set up within a day or two, and they started working on that. We've made some changes to some of the turnout gear. It's now gonna start in the F M F R on it, the Fettersmo Fire Rescue. And you've probably seen that we do have now a uh Facebook page up, the Fire, or Fettersmo Fire Rescue. We're trying to get the information from both organizations put onto there to show you what we're doing, and have the community look at it to see what we're doing. In addition, we conducted an emergency service committee meeting, which is the joint committee of the eleven officials from both uh groups. The fire chiefs of presidents from both groups. We recapped what we accomplished in twenty-twenty-four. We went over our priorities and sets some goals for twenty-twenty-five, and we look forward to a uh productive year again in getting this uh. Um, system up and running and into the future. Uh, as Fire Marshal Man, as far as fire, or uh I mentioned as far as fire calls, we were on uh January sixth in Meadow Road or Meadow Lane. Break kitchen fire. Uh, the guys in, or I should say the firefighters that were on scene did a fabulous job. Uh, I should mention, it was a Monday night. We were in the middle of the shift change at one of the stations. We had a full volunteer staff in, because it's a training night. They happened to be out on a call right before it, so it gave us in-station personnel that got into the scene, got water on the fire immediately. And probably resulted in property savings that could have went from. A a substantial amount, but to a total loss. So they they did a great job. It shows the importance of having in-station personnel. And we're very pleased with uh the outcome of that. Then on twenty-three, twenty-five, we had an auto extrication at Kenline and Heat Room. We were in service for about an hour on that. We extricated one patient from a vehicle. And just to highlight the fire calls for the uh month. Brennethen had forty calls, Huntington Valley forty-one, another station, and EMS calls two-hundred-one for them. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Questions from the board?
I have a question, and I think it's really great. On the Huntington Valley, on the fireside. I saw that um they donated uh some of the, our used equipment. It's very expensive. To another neighboring fire company, um, because we, they have gotten, they had gotten a grant for new equipment.
Yeah. Taken place, yeah. Ted's spearheading that project.
So what is that? Just because we're not aware.
The hydraulic rescue tools that were replaced with the, they're now uh battery-operated or powered tools still hydraulic. The old tools that are no longer serviceable have some life left in them, so they're being donated to local fire departments that can utilize them.
I have a question. Um, down at one of the shore points. The homeowner pulls a permit for demolition of the house to build a brand-new house. During that process, the fire company gets involved, and the homeowner can donate the house for a fire, for practice. So with new houses coming around here, I'd never even heard of such a thing. It's actually one of my friends, he's having to donate, he donated the house to. Is that something you've ever heard of? Would you consider it? Is it?
We actually have done it. Uh, we have to be careful in that. Because sometimes the house, and some of the older houses contain hazardous substances, asbestos and so forth. Without certification or approvals that are done prior to us going and doing our work, we can't really use it, because it's a hazard to our people. There are occasions that we do get houses that have been deemed safe, that we do do non-destructive-type training on. We don't burn houses down.
Yeah.
And we do, we just don't do that. But we will go in and do breaching, we'll do ventilation, we'll do roofwork. Uh, we currently use the two houses that we own up on the bike for our ladder training. Again, it's not being destructive, it's just replacement uh and maneuverability. Uh, we currently are in negotiations with the Brennethen Elementary School. It's going to be torn down. In fact, it was a meeting this morning that some of our representatives were at, that we're gonna be able to get that building for about a week or two to do some. Uh, fire training on as well. But again, no live fire training, it's all non-destructive-type or breaching-type things. Yeah. Areas that are gonna be torn down.
Got it.
But we do try to keep on top of that. In fact, this month, we were up at Southampton where they tour the bank, and it's gonna be the Wawa. And a number of our folks out there working on that building, the folks from Southampton.
Mark, I I have a couple of questions.
Can we uh, can we start with Ruth while we're here, and then we'll go up to you?
Okay, alright, yep.
Go ahead, Ruth. How are we doing with the hiring for the second ameans?
It's actually all in place. Our crews are in, on staff. Uh, unfortunately, through attrition, we have lost some others. So it's kind of like a continuous process. I will tell you, we had a tremendous amount of uh response to our application process. I think we received like thirty-two applicants. We interviewed approximately twenty-three of those applicants, and we did the hiring there. There was four hirings that we were going to do based on the additional uh personnel that we did. There was four hirings that we were going to do based on the additional uh personnel that we did, but that resulted in really eight hirings. Because some of the folks we brought on, we might have had as per diem or part-time folks, bottom up to full-time. And then we backfilled those uh from there, so if you remember, we worked twenty-four hours seventy-two off. Our per diems were twelve-hour shifts, so they worked the power shifts, the shorter shifts, so we had that both there, but we do have full staffing as we speak right now.
Excellent, I couldn't help but notice that there were seventy-two other medical calls. Is, is that because other townships nearby are not?
That's correct, yeah, that, that'll happen, it's covered, so we get dispatched automatically, it's done by their computer uh in a dispatch system. They go to the next available ambulance for the call, whether it be from our station or the returning from a hospital, whoever's closest. I believe that's how we're still doing it.
It's based on priority, yeah.
Based on what?
Priority, so let's say you have one of our ambulances coming back from Holy Regamer and cardiac arrest goes out in Meadow Brook Apartments. Computers smart enough to say this ambulance is closer than who should be dispatched and we'll send them in addition to other.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
And in addition to that, and we talked about the second ambulance, we now see a lot of third deep ambulance calls. Where the two are busy and then we'll get a third call come in that we have to cover. And as you're aware, we mentioned before, we have a third ambulance that's been ordered, uh, we were able to take advantage of a. Uh, ambulance that we found that was in an accident, did not damage the box on it, so we were able to purchase at a reduced price. Bought a new chassis, it's all being uh fabricated right now at Click who we bought the fire trucks from their ambulance division. So we hope to see that in May and we're working on the funding for the equipment, we have about a hundred thousand dollars worth of equipment that has to go into that ambulance to put it into service. We're looking at alternative funding sources right now, working with a couple of our elected officials to try to help us out on that.
Are you going to be coming to us for uh staffing for that? Okay.
We're going to handle it with what we have right now.
I guess.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think Dennis has.
Dennis?
Yeah, Chief, uh, two questions, um, the first is, you know, related to. You know, you mentioned in, in your report on some of the changes and new turnout gear and, and lettering that, that you're seeing, uh. Can you talk a little bit about how morale's been and, and how the, the changes go and are, are you hearing less uh? Compliments, people seem to accepting it, you know, how, how are, how are conditions of the, or I guess the morale of the volunteers? On, on both Brennethin side and, and the Huntington Valley side?
Okay, you know, i- this is probably one of the toughest parts of the entire process. Uh, when the tower truck arrived, I think that was a big step. And everybody recognizing, hey, you know what, we, the, the future is definitely coming, we, we, we realize that now. Does everybody accept that? No, we know that. Um, hasn't gotten better, in my opinion, yes, we're doing a lot of joint type operations now that aren't fire related. But yet training related, business related, uh, we're trying to keep everybody uh meshed together as best as possible. I'd be lying to you if I told you everybody's happy and everybody sings kumbaya, I hate that term, but uh. It just, it's not going to be that until we can all, I think, get into one station eventually, and I think that's what's going to be the huge turning point. But has it been better? Absolutely. Are there hiccups? Absolutely, just tonight we had some uh discrepancies on a call that we went to, uh. I think it's more policy based because of what the Montgomery County nine one one center has for a type of call. But these are minor issues that come up that I have to get involved with, I wish I didn't have to because I have a lot of things on my plate I'm trying to do, a lot of. Balls in the air that we're trying to juggle, but again, it's personnel issues that we have to still deal with and we're doing the best we can with that. I, I think it's safe to say that we're in the, we're on the right path and I think that everybody recognizes that now. And they're all doing their best to cooperate and try to make it happen.
Okay, and, and the other question is, you mentioned about the, you know, that we're still doing training on the truck and it's, it's not a. A question of criticism, but when do you think the training will be complete and, and when? You know, do we have a target date that, that truck will be, you know, in service and, you know, training complete? In, in terms of like ready to, ready to use, like what, do you have a plan for that?
Well, the truck is in service and it is in use now. Uh, the training that we're doing is repetitive training to try to make sure everybody's competent in the operations of it. But we also have a common checkoff listed, everybody that operates or gets signed off on, whether you're a driver or an operator of the aerial device.
Okay.
Go through both station chiefs, which are Ted Mittelman for Huntington Valley, Tim Weiss for Brennethin. Have to do the final signatures on that before it comes to me, they are the ones that will approve who is capable of doing that. Just today, we had a case where we didn't have a stipend driver that was qualified to drive the tower truck. But we had drivers up at the Brennethin Station that were qualified, so we moved the entire operation up to their station today. With both the tower ladder and the squad company from down at Huntington Valley. And we operated out of there, mixing the crews together on that, it worked out really well.
Okay, now I understand, thank you, that, that was all.
Sean, do you have anything for Chief Showmaker? Okay.
No, nothing for me.
Now.
Chief Showmaker.
Thank you.
All right, that takes me to my liaison reports, civil service, I have nothing to report. For the library and the annual meeting of the Huntington Valley Library Board of Trustees will take place this Thursday, February thirteenth at seven P M. As a hybrid meeting, please see the website for details. Thursday, February twentieth at seven P M, the adult social group will meet for winter seed sowing. This is a beginner friendly, low maintenance and cost effective way to grow hardy seedlings at home using milk chokes and takeout trays. Saturday, March eighth at two P M, awesome adoptions, come learn from a Briar Bush Nature Center educator. About the incredible adaptions that animals have to help them meet the challenges in their environment. You'll meet some animal ambassadors and see their own special adaptations up close, from camouflage to special tails. In silent flight to not so sharp spikes, R S V P if you'd like to attend to that. And then there's another event Tuesday, March twenty fifth at seven P M. Joining for the historical interpreters, Alyssa Dupay and Kurt Rat. I'm going to butcher this one, Radada, Radaboo. As they bring Martha and George Washington to life at the Huntington Valley Library, please R S V P via phone or on the website. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, next chair recognizes Commissioner Housen, Chair of the Public Property Committee, Ruth.
Uh, well, we have our sewer report and basically, things are going on swimmingly. Couldn't resist. We are, we have, you know, still working on the replacements that we haven't completed, anything, right? Didn't finish anything last month.
Longview is up and running.
Okay, good.
Woodland, they did the startup today.
Okay.
Uh, they'll be moving to Hollow Well.
Well, you're not going to go to Hollow Well until Woodland is done, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Okay, go, go figure, Longview is, is, is.
And they'll have, there's some little things, you did plant in this advance, stuff they'll do in spring. Of course, the main station's, it's done, and the Forest Hills project is complete.
Oh, that's right.
Just the seed.
Excellent, Forest Hills project is complete, if you all couldn't hear that, which is wonderful. That was not a good situation, so Steve fixed it. Um, the township authority didn't, did not meet and the hardware did not meet. Uh, the flat project continues, we had an in-person meeting last week. Um, and we're starting to give out assignments and we're going to be going up to Norristown to uh start doing some research. Okay, anybody have any questions for me on any of that?
We do not, Sean, Dennis, any questions for Ruth?
None for me.
Okay.
Hey, that completes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Housen, we'll wrap it up before we wrap it up, just to let you know the commissioners, so Ruth and I uh went to the Pennsylvania State Association of Adaptor Commissioners. So we collected these for you, every commissioner will have some pins. I'll make sure Dennis and uh Sean you get those, uh, we will open up for um. You know, public comment on any non-agenda items, would anyone like to address the board?
Yeah, Mark D. George again, um, Dale Road, Huntington Valley, uh, this is a pet, pet peeve of mine. Um, and I hope you'll indulge me with it, I, I wanted to talk, uh, bring up, uh. Some conversation with the commissioners about rethinking our uh. Contractor soliciting ordinance. I, I think with uh. With the influx of robberies we, we have now.
Uh, are you referring to the responsible contractors ordinance?
No, no sir.
What's about peddling and soliciting?
Solicitation, uh, yeah.
Uh, uh, yeah, with the influx that we all know is, is all around us now, with the car break-ins, war home robberies. I personally think it's idiotic to have strangers traipsing our streets. Uh, they get to see who's home, who's not, what, uh, you know, all the, all the inside tips. Uh, and I think the, the soliciting should end. Uh, we're, we're condoning strangers walking our streets.
Mr. George, you know, we do have an ordinance on this where they must register.
Oh, yes, I'm glad you brought that up.
Uh-huh.
Uh, I, that's another pet peeve of mine, I'm so glad you brought that up, did I have another three minutes about?
You have another minute?
All right, no, uh, I personally have uh walked into the police station years ago. And put my name on a list that I do not wish to be uh bothered. I've also gone online and, and done the same thing and uh that is a joke. Uh, I've had people knock on my door and say, hey, listen, I'm on the list. They have no clue, they, they've actually done the right thing and gone to the township and got a uh permit to solicit. But my, my question would be to the government here, uh, who notifies the, when they, when they commit for a permit? Uh, who gives them a list of what uh, what address they should avoid? There's, that's a huge disconnect, uh, and, and.
Wouldn't let the police go.
We, we do that, so we maintain the list of the houses, they get that list every time they come out.
Right.
They get a copy of our um, our ordinance itself, um, so they get, they get all, they get all that list of who, who is, who has the no solicitation and.
Okay, I've always questioned them, have you, you know, you have a list of, yeah, and I, it's always a, a big uh. Shrug, uh, I, I think that should be, it's got to be more enforced, uh, and I'm not trying to.
No, and I'll just only ask this because we don't give them if it's a political organization or uh, religious organizations where we can't. So I, I don't, I just want to preface if it's one like that, that we don't.
No, I understand, I understand that, uh, but uh, now more than ever with all, with the increase of crime. Um, I don't think we should, uh, my uh, my joining that, that do not solicit group. Has not worked ever.
Well, I'm going to call this if, if they gum and they're not supposed to, because then we can revoke their permit.
Yeah, okay, but uh, again, with, with, just with the crime issue, I, you know, I think with the, the township should. Uh, reconsider whether they should allow it or not, uh.
I think you're about the time anyway, but that's a First Amendment issue, they have to allow solicitation, commercial solicitation has to be allowed. There's that United States Supreme Court cases that say exactly this, so we can outright prohibit it, we can put parameters around it, which is exactly what the chief was.
Okay, but before that, you were stopping me for time, is that?
I think you have four minutes, yeah.
Okay.
I'm going to answer you there too, is we have a pretty strict um peddling and solicitation ordinance, but. Well, we'll take a look with our solicitors, if there's anything else we can do to tighten it up.
Yeah.
And also the chief, I know the chief also puts out posts on the Crime Watch and his Facebook page to say this contractor. Is, has gotten permission.
That's what made me think of it, because I saw, I did see that.
So at least like the public now.
For the most part, so.
Well, we could see.
Yeah, firmly they have the display while they're doing this, right, they have a permit that they put on.
Yeah, they're, they've got it, yeah.
Be provided to almost laminated and.
So, I know the drill, so thanks very much.
Thank you, anyone else, thank you for your comments, anyone on Zoom? Would like to address the board regarding the non-agenda item? We're good? Okay, Karen Nosh, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Motion, move this section on paper.
Aye.